We're gonna reconvene our budget hearing. How many people are okay with the budget? How many are not? We're 1.7 million dollars short. If any of the council has any ideas, it'd be nice to hear them.
Sure. So, you called me on the low.
Yeah.
I do what we're doing. Things made that... Whatever we do is not in the pocket position.
It should be.
Because basket full. So, go ahead and... Regarding goodbye, we kinda went through the budgets, the timing, the bads here and there. But go ahead and accept the budget departments that we've already gone through. Go ahead and accept those with the exception of a 0% pay increase this year. This way, it allows the departments to have the money that they kinda ask for to do their job. So, first to the big study stuff, department's got a fairly large increase. So, I got my own employees. And here, I give them a raise if I can. Here's good, bigger raises. Not so good, I give them a smaller raise. Think we're caught in between a rock and a hard place right now. My thoughts, my recommendations, kinda where I'm thinking anyway. Give the departments money to operate, but ask forgiveness and grace. I can give them a raise this year and hope they're not too badass. They'll be, but that makes them tough to do. Kinda where my brain lies. I'm not stuck there, but it's an option, I guess.
Are y'all still having any thoughts?
Well, I'll put a rebuttal to... Proposal there. I guess I'm kinda the opposite way. I would rather see a department try and manage within, unfortunately, maybe more restricted funds toward operations. And I think it's important, make sure that employees get pay raises and stuff. Because don't... When you don't, I've lived that dream once before. I've lived workforce reduction in the county once before. And I think that, you know, when you don't, when you lose, when you don't give pay raises, two things are gonna happen. Number one, we'll get further behind again on our pay weight. So, we, yes, did a fairly substantial pay raise here, asked and tried to pick some of the indifferences because we were way behind and didn't have applications setting on a shelf for employees. But market... That'll just put us farther behind back again. And then here, in another year, we'll be struggling with employees, departments, or retaining. It's not only getting, it's retaining. We gotta retain our employees. The other thing that I see is when employees don't see, you know, unfortunately, it comes through their way of monetary value when they don't see a pay increase under pay, lose... Start losing their morale, their incentive to continue to work, continue to provide. When you lose morale and people's input, that's very hard to get back. Don't get that back quickly. Struggle, so... Yeah, 2.7, 2.8, something like that. So, you know, that's why, why my thought before was, you know, was a 3%. I just rounded it 2.8, 3. I could live with either one there, but I think it's important that we recognize our employee, you know, I just, I think that's very important. Well, I know it's not a popular idea, but, you know, from discussions that we had at our last meeting, I know about, you know, going back to 2025 budget. I would not cut it any further than what that is because I do agree that's kinda hammering people both sides. But if you go, if you look at the 2023 budget, or excuse me, 2025 budget, you know, that falls within our, our projected revenue stream for the upcoming year. But it all, and then if you add in the 3% raise, I think it was at a 5% raise, wrong three, 120,000, 5% raise, or I'd say it was a 3%.
I wanna say something. Voted on that. You voted no. Now you want it again?
Because the one that was put in there before, what, that was... And Mary did a very good job of explaining that, and I agree with her. That when you do, when you do, the way I mentioned it before and what was put up was it would be a, going back to the 2025 budget, and if there was things that was even less, we'd remove even that money out, so that would really reduce it even below. So, that's really restricting. And, and I agree with her, and I took that under advisement, and I, I agree with that. I, I don't think that is a good, a good matrix to follow. That's... No, you're not listening. What I said was, before, we would go back to the, at the meeting, that it was voted on. I said, you said what Ken said. What I said then is we'd go to the 2025 budget, and if anybody had numbers in there lower than the 2025 budget, we would reduce to the lowest number. So, that means it would be the 2025 budget. Anybody that had something in there, let's say they said their budget for 2026 was, say 2025 was $3,000. 2026, they had lowered it down to $2,200. That would be hitting them both ways. So, I'd be, not, we would not only be reducing them to the 2025, then we'd also be taking more away. And she brought up a very, there was a very valid point brought up, and I thought it needed to be addressed and thought about. I've thought about it, and I agree with it. But I also agree that, I know it's not gonna be easy, but we have kind of, we have two choices. The starting place, if there's somebody sees something different, that's open. But the, the starting, pardon me? My starting place is, you know, and I know it's not gonna be easy for departments, but if my choice is trying to restrict some of the funds in a department, or cutting the pay raise, I'll ask the departments to try and constrain as much as they can within their budget, go back to the 2025 budget, and give a 3% pay raise to our employees. I would rather give a pay raise and ask the departments as a whole.
You are saying go back to...
Yes, but not reduce it any farther than the 2025. Apparently, then, the motion that was made at the last one wasn't even understood the way I said it, but other people did understand it.
Gonna go that route.
There were, there were things that could be asked for and negotiated.
Back to that.
Add that back in if you wanted. I mean, I know there's, I mean, you know, the, the other thing, and I've lived that dream before, with Mr. Keith, when we were commissioners. We had to do a workforce reduction if you wanna keep the budget. I really don't wanna go down that road. You don't either, trust me. I've been there before. It's not fun.
120,000 for 5%? Two and a half percent, 60,000.
Roughly 75,000.
Benefits go up or are priced?
13%. Like 13.7 something.
What is the employee?
They went up.
What's the?
None, we pay all of it.
They, yeah, they did that instead of giving a raise, they gave, they paid the whole.
That's been a long time.
I don't think we have a number yet.
Oh.
That's a great idea in theory, but that's really not ever what happened. Because, I'm sorry, I don't mean to put a nix in your thing, but every year, we're over. We have been. We're last, not this year, but what did we say, 1.8 last year? So, every year, we're over, and then we have a overflow that goes, rolls back over into the next year, but we're still always, we're still always short. We're over at the end of the year, but we're still, feel like this year will 1.9. We estimated, what, $700,000 that will roll back over from next year? But next year's a funny year too, because now we have to think about the $400,000 from ARPA that we have to do too. So, every year, we're skimming off County General just a little bit to cover our overage from the rollover, and it's still kind of silly, because it sounds like we don't ever have a balanced budget, but it's not really as bad as what...
I think if I remember right, better memory, Dave, when he did the first fiscal plan, Peter's municipal, I think he said, that's what we had, rate we were going, what we had, cash reserves, out of money by then. You know, we've slowed the bleeding down, haven't stopped, still, we're still using cash reserves. I think the last number from the Baker Tilly one was mid 2030s, like that, 32, 33, somewhere in there, that we'd still be out at the trend we were going, and that was six years later.
I was, I was, I was talking to Dave and he'll know who he is, AIC, well, I can't think of his last name. Anyway, it doesn't matter. He was, I was telling him about that, and he was texting me, like, how's come we're always over? He goes, "Well, say you have 5,000 fine items, and you have $100 in each one, that's a lot of money. You have $500,000 right there." So, goes, telling me that, you know, that's why your new budget, and we have like a $7 million shortfall. Oh, and we usually have 700,000 left. And I was trying to ask him, why do we always have that? Why? Common knowledge, we're all, figure, wanna have to, wanna have some left, everybody's got a little bit left.
So, I guess, going off that statement, so we're always over budgeting, we're always short when we budget, and then we're, have a surplus at the end of the year that we roll over, but then we take the money from County General, help fund the budget for the following year. So, every year, we skim a little bit off of County General's balance. So, do you wanna just keep setting that precedent, doing that? In what we've done? Or do you make hard decisions and, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for any of this, I'm just talking out loud, then do you advocate, the only where, only thing left to cut is positions? So, so you either keep skimming off and hoping that we don't ever get to the point where we're down to the point where we can't skim anymore, or you cut positions? That's all that's, we've cut everything else out.
Talk something. But a lot of people, I'm, I'm in, I've always thought, alternate ideas. As a lot of people talk, but...
An idea about what?
What?
You have an idea about what?
What we're talking about, obviously.
I don't, I don't know. We have public comment, and, 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 you know, yeah, I mean, we know, know the budget, you know, we're, we're in it for...
It's just, it's just an idea. You don't like your idea, that's fine.
I don't like it. But we have, we have like, everybody wants to fight for their office, understand why.
Fuck them.
Yeah. And they better. But if we have the money, serve, spend it all.
But, you know...
We gotta, gotta figure out, I don't know, I think, hitting nowhere here, probably should figure out a raise first, if we wanna have a raise, or don't wanna have one. Yes, I was okay with the 2.5%. Else is okay with that because I deserve a raise, and I don't know.
But I think it was 2.8, whatever the...
It's 2.7, 2.8.
I thought we voted on it. I'm, I'm good with that number.
Oh, no, we didn't. I'll make a motion to have a cost of living raise at 2.8.
I'll second.
Question, and a motion second at 2.8, cost of living, across the board.
Yes, that's my motion, across the board. Both of them.
Question, favors, five saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Got the raise figured out, I think, happy to... Now, we have, went through everybody's budget, that for... Nathan, Horace? Who's what?
Because Chris.
Is okay with Nathan's budget?
Budget, right?
His numbers are the same as the 20, actually, under the budget.
Talking about. Motion was?
I, I didn't make a motion on it.
Well, that's what you're...
But that's what I was talking about, yeah.
Bad again.
Saying, had no employees?
Whatever his employee, that line would be.
That, so that, 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 just for his department, all departments, no new employees?
I don't think... Way of paying for it, paying for it. Have to...
So, there's your, there's your vote.
Wait, I got a motion to decide, any discussion?
Yes. Since I wasn't at the last budget meeting, departments, how we did the other ones, we went through each one and voted on them individually and...
Oh, that's how we're doing this?
Well, yeah.
No, we did.
Went through each...
We're not voting on the budget as a whole at the end, we're just voting on everything.
I guess it depends if we're just gonna take it back to 2025 or not.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
What, Jeff?
I think we would.
Ken, I think, yeah, I was just asking, like I said, I wasn't, I didn't know if you voted on...
I thought Mike said that we didn't.
I don't remember.
I think we did that.
I just, I remember, because we weren't getting anywhere, so we gotta get somewhere. And I don't know what time you guys are, I, but... Gotta be over before midnight.
I got a motion second. All those favors, five saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Go back to, don't use.
Nathan, added, aye, nine.
By, yeah, again.
Your third person.
Out of the local income tax economic development fund, like the rest of my budget, one that is...
Not coming out of County General.
The one that is getting a $57,000 increase next year compared to this year's revenue. I can actually save you guys a little bit more money. I'll get with Teresa and Jenny Schenk on the specifics of it, but effective at the first of the year, my salary should be cut 2.5% because I will not do anything that is not part of my community development job description after the first of the year if I'm not gonna be given the support I need to do my job. So, no more live streaming, no more website updates that aren't pertinent to economic development and tourism, no more construction projects, no more research, gonna do the job I was hired to do if I'm not gonna be given the support I need to do the job I'm being asked to.
That.
Hell, I'm, I'm, he does. Only one way to sort the budget. That's where the...
Oh, I agree. That's why I cut so much of my other operational budget to fit this position.
Couldn't talk about it.
Person.
I, I don't think... Budget. That money. Brought that up in question. That money's coming. Wherever that money's coming.
So, if there was a motion saying that to fund his position out of the local income tax versus, are we allowed? I made a motion that says, support his staff with local, local income. Make that motion. Right. But I don't think that was clear.
Yeah, where we...
I do.
Sorry, Jeff?
I do.
Okay. Then we're holding off on anything.
I mean, you, you voted on it.
Doesn't mean we can't add employees.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the council's stretch for responsibility to set the number of employees and the wages therefore.
And the wage.
Will be?
Horace?
Or one you want? Pick whichever one you want. Pick whichever one you want.
Well, I, I think the understanding, I, I remember. Turkey Court under the, at the 2025. And Hooker was 71. That's where we're at. Ours.
And. Yeah, motion second, any discussion? Question?
Hold, hold on.
Oh, I guess. That's my discussion would be, so. Once again, if we're talking about reduction, talking about getting things. Keeping things in line. And we've talked about staff requirements, we've talked about. Lost of staff, looking at workforce reduction of that nature. I guess I, you know, and I know the navigator puts a lot of, brings added value to the community. Other departments, they need staff support to do their jobs just as much as anybody else. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we, it's not comfortable. One's fine, but the other one's not. I have a standard, somebody can sell me on why, why that would be different.
First, for that misdemeanor reimbursement.
But that's, but that's what you have, we have that now. All right. That happens with a lot of, a lot of stuff to fund. Revenue comes in. Anyway. Yeah, but we have the person in that position, how? Have a navigator. But this.
Regardless, the misdemeanor, I'm just asking, are you getting the misdemeanor fund to fund the navigator or is the money going there regardless? You're getting the misdemeanor matching money. Offices applying, that based off the navigator's performance or is that based off? Regardless of misdemeanor offices. Get that money, not based off the navigator. Aye.
That being.
Um. And are you waiting for?
I'm, I'm, I'm waiting for those that are opposed.
Ayes. Going back to Nathan's thing, I don't like my vote.
I'm gonna make a motion to track my approval of my, of Nathan's budget. Approve.
I wanna retract my.
I'm just.
That's big. I'll discuss it, because I'm probably the one that threw. That. I didn't understand.
I just don't think you can lock, close a door, it just can't be locked, probably can't get in.
That door doesn't stay open. All right, I'm just helping.
Jeff, my office isn't funded, is funded entirely out of Fund 1112, which is part of our local income tax revenue, not county jump.
Well, I just, I just want to. I, I always don't know what pot would get. I do.
No, 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 the, the fund itself is increased, so, you know, every year the state certifies a certain amount of revenue. I'm under 2025 and this fund has a much larger increase than the other income tax funds have. Because the state's calculation changed it based on our debt service.
Thank you. Basically, threaten to not do his job. Unless he got an employee.
No, I threatened to do a job that isn't my job.
I don't, I don't.
I don't know whose microphone it is.
Anyways, I would change my vote.
Missioners are making $26,000. Got a motion in a second, what, take your motion.
Um. Yep. My motion is to retract your, my, the approval of Nathan's budget and reapprove it with addition of his.
You haven't adopted the final budget, you can reverse any decision. As long as you have a majority vote.
All those in favor, say aye, I guess.
Just keep.
Aye.
Well, I guess we're just tracking up until you get a vote.
Yeah. Takes full report. Having them down everybody's throat.
Anybody paying on that? I guess I'm the one that voted, I'm taking back my vote. Hers back, you taking, taking theirs back? Back on.
Fuck you.
Have Nathan.
All vote. In favor of retracting the, you have the, we have a motion and we have a second. Retract the approval of Nathan's budget and add the person in, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Yeah, I understand, but it, it's.
Nathan's budget, he's got.
Well.
It's all a void. Be voted on now, with this position, found out, new information, real information is, it comes out of lit, give the parts of navigator, give Nathan that, I went to a meeting, don't have an HR person, we tried to get an HR person, oh, it didn't. Know that the county's like, I think we're a deal one, don't have one. Follow ambulance. Overtime and not. A job. They're working overtime on part-time pay, it's like, how can you do? Lot of stuff going on, I don't think Nathan's got either. Already lost one.
Uh, as for the vote that was taken, there was a motion in the second and there was a vote carried, so only person that can rescind a vote was the person that paid the motion. If you want, yo, if you want to make a motion, carried. Somebody needs to pay the motion. I don't want to vote. Vote. Vote to a new vote.
Had a one? HR person? I don't.
I think, I think we need an HR person, a lot worse than we need a lot of other people.
Who else, all again, aye? Person in. Be hiring. Want to have another department.
But if you're a part of.
We keep hiring people, so we might as well hire, hiring people, might as well hire more.
I'm not in favor. HR.
Or department.
If we put him in the auditor's office, you wouldn't have to create a new budget.
I'm, I'm not favoring that.
Right. Nor should it be your, it's not your job, it's not in your job statute. Opens us up for lawsuits.
Well, the only budget we have left now is Nathan's.
I don't know, Brad.
One that made the motion, we all voted on it.
Now, I'm taking back my vote.
A rescission of a motion happens before a vote takes place. Once it, once the motion carries, you need to, it's not, if, if AJ made a motion and then Mike said, hey, XYZ, and AJ says, oh, maybe I don't want to make this motion now, then he would rescind it, but there's not a question of rescission now because you have already finished the action, so it's a question of whether or not you cast a new vote to repeal the budget approval and then approve it in a different form.
Hello, I said that like five.
So if I.
I wear a suit, so it sounds more.
I guess, I guess, my blue shirt doesn't, uh, go on.
Have an action that you have approved. If somebody wants to say, let's put that position back in, I move to override the previous approval and to reapprove the budget with the inclusion of the third step.
I make a motion, go ahead and add Nathan's third person. Budget.
For all you need.
Okay, I make a motion to add Nathan's third person back into his budget using lit money.
I'll say.
Uh, discussion.
Is your right?
Still didn't pass.
Oh, it just didn't pass. So didn't know.
I don't think you ever actually got around to repealing the first one, so, the, as approv, it stands approved without the. You can't just rescind it, you have to rescind it by voting overriding.
Is this? Budget? I, I was, I was on the front of a national committee. Probably not required.
I'm.
Revenue.
I'll be brief. I will completely discount what was just said. EDA payments not go to offset general budget. They can't for our department wages. They can't for the EMS, not for wages. Yes, they can. I will share with you all of the factual information. You have restrictions on, for those discretionary voluntary funds whose wages, county wages aren't one of them. So when we're looking at finding ways to keep here and offset like the number of people. Wait, that's an opportunity for us. I'll be happy to share it with, would like to see it.
I agree.
This evening? No. I will email it to you, but it's late this evening and I will happily share it with you. But those payments are for other projects. What I'm saying is like we had a lot of wage. Meaning those EDA payments be used to offset that. Just a consideration when you're thinking about how to apply this.
I believe the way that our EDA payments are written is that the council's discretion on how to allocate the funds.
Can't go to offset general fund utilization.
But we can transfer the money from the fund that is in.
Then that would require a review of state board of accounts because that is not following the Indiana code.
Comments on everything you guys have discussed tonight? It comes down to money, 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 money. You've got an opportunity. Solar, who was given generous tax abatement, generous tax abatement, not much in economic development payments in their first rounds. And you have an opportunity now to capitalize on them being here. They have to understand that times in our county are different than what they were five years ago when they first applied. They know that. You guys know that. It's, it's, it's different at this point. They're not going anywhere else. I mean, you've got 72 counties in Indiana that are shutting the doors to renewable energies. They know that their places to do business in Indiana currently are very, very limited. And they have found a cash cow here in Plaski County. They will pay the abatements. They will pay economic development payments. They will pay a 30% depreciation floor. As council, you are leaving huge amounts of money on the table if you offer them a tax abatement. There aren't many places they can go. The doors have closed. And for whatever reason, Plaski County still has the doors open. They're gonna do whatever you ask them to do. They're not leaving. They have set up home here in Plaski County, which is fine. We need the revenue. But for goodness sakes, understand that you can get whatever you need. And you're sitting here talking about a 1.5% increase for employees. As a teacher, there were several years I got a 1% increase, just to let you know. So 1.5 is not unheard of. But there is all kinds of money out there from MAMASORER alone. And you're letting them skate through the county. I don't understand it. Common sense, after sitting here listening to this tonight, tells me the county needs the money. Why would you give any of it up? I think you need to think real hard here about what your, what this next decision is gonna be. There's no reason to leave money on the table. They're staying here. They're here. You, you have leverage now that you've never had before. Use it for this county. If it's gonna be here, use it and get the most for the people of Plaski County. I, I don't understand who we're working for. You were all, you were all elected by the people of Plaski County. And the large majority is ready to see income come in from these corporations. I ask you, when you sit down in your executive session, this should not be a lengthy discussion. It should be pretty easy.
I just wanted to say thank you for those of you had good conversations with me the last couple of. That and how that bring revenue. One thing I would know, my job is to. And doing that today, things I've noticed. It's sad. It's really sad. Sit here and listen. I had to say this. Laugh. Important for all of us, realize that I am not someone. That's, I, one year out of my six years, I have to engage. I don't like it because every other year, my ethical requirement of me don't allow it. And I think there's enough politicking going on enough that has, I've never seen. I don't know why. I divided this. So I think apart from. Looking at numbers and data and I'm in courtesy that all had in Plaski.
Public comment? Wait, can I hear it right? Hmm? I hear it right. It is. Yeah.